Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 16th, 2020 meeting of the Gethysberg Planning Commission. Good evening, commissioners. I hope everybody is having a good, good week. First up tonight is the approval or minutes from August 5th, 2020. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of August the 5th, 2020 is ready to the record.
Do I have a second? You all are on mute. So if somebody says a second, okay, thanks, Phil. So then I'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins? You're on mute, Matt. I, your mouth says aye, but the speaker says nothing.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Next up is, we have a consent agenda tonight. There's one item, and that's for AFP-8109-2019. Stripe parking lot at 6 through 12 North Summit Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone. And this is an amendment to final plan. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda tonight?
No.
All right. Well, you saw the recommendation from staff. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. So Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much for that. And that takes us to our site plan agenda. And there's one item tonight for AFP-8568-2020. An amendment to the comprehensive sign package for Rio Washingtonian Center in the MXD Mixed Juice Development Zone. And this is amendment to final plan and presented from staff is Laura. The food, good evening, Laura. How are you?
Good evening. Good. Thank you. So this is amendment to final site plan application AFP 8568-2020 submitted by Dan Figueroa of Peterson Companies on August 11th, 2020. This application requests revisions to the approved sign package for the Rio Washingtonian Center. The Rio Washingtonian Center is located just south of the I-270 and I-370 interchange. And it's comprised of the parcels you see outlined here on your screen in red. The proposed revisions to the sign package include six new signs not previously included in the package, some of which have dimensions that deviate from what city code allows. Updates to several existing approved signs for clarification purposes. Updates to the sign aesthetics and logos and an updated sign location plan indicating potential locations of the signs detailed in the package. And I will now turn it over to the applicant, Dan Figueroa, to go over the changes being proposed.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Laura. Commissioners, I appreciate your time tonight. As we've embarked on this refresh of the Rio Center, it's always been intended that we take the new personality of what we are injecting into the center and carry that through our wayfinding and branding and signage throughout the center. So we engaged 505 design and Kevin Kern is here to present with me to help take that personality and translate it into the center through wayfinding signs, through environmental graphics, and really highlight what this center is becoming through our phase renovations. So as Laura discussed, we took the opportunity to introduce some new signage throughout the project and then clean up some discrepancies that we found in the previously approved CSP. So there was a lot of administrative stuff that we needed to address. And I'll go through some highlights of the things that we cleaned up. Next page, please. Okay, so this is one of the newer signs that we are presenting tonight. And what this sign is, is really a, a, a sign that is intended for people to approach. The scale of it is to create an Instagrammable moment, if you will. And it is being presented to be situated on a screening wall that hides a loading dock for the hotel on Boardwalk Place. So there is a long brick wall that is probably 10 feet high, I believe. And right now, it's, there's some greenery that's planted at ground level and grows up so high. And we want to take this opportunity now with Silver Diner directly across from this wall to really create a venue that people will, will engage with and entertain with in an otherwise kind of dull area, dull screening wall. So 505 came up with the design. They played with some of the colors and some of the environmental graphics to create this, this Instagrammable moment. And this is metal with some acrylic letters and some vinyl to get the pop of the branded colors. Next slide, please. Here we get into some, what we're calling totem wayfinding signs. And I'll turn it over to Kevin to describe, you know, where he found this inspiration and how he came up with this, this design. But we felt like we could create an architectural interest and convey signage that will direct people through the linear bifurcated project. We have two essential sides of the, of the project. So this is intended to grab interest from afar and direct people to it, kind of like a beacon, and then also communicate effectively what is over the bridge. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you if you want to talk a little bit about this, this concept?
Sure, sure. So this is a four-sided totem. It is, it sits in a pedestrian plaza on one side of the property. And like Dan said, the intent is that it serves as a recognizable beacon or gathering spot within the pedestrian plaza. But we, the intent was, we were looking at it more as a, an artful piece that happens to serve the purpose of wayfinding and directing people to some of the tenants on the other side of the lake at Rio. This incorporates the brand colors. It's perforated, so it, it does have some lighting at night. Just a soft, subtle glow comes through the perforations. And I think, I think that's about it on this item.
Next slide, please. And just across the bridge on the other side of the project, on the, what we refer to as the waterfront side, we continue this tall cluster of signs. Again, in the small pedestrian plaza that we have outside of Copper Canyon. And again, this is to create interest from the movie theater entrance down that way. Pull people through a unique aesthetic and also utilize this as a functional wayfinding sign. Like Kevin said, it's designed to be an artistic, functional signage. So it's unique and quite airy. But if taken, taken from afar, you kind of see the patterns kind of meld together and create a cool visual in, in taking in full context.
Kevin, anything to add on that?
Um, I think the only thing I would add is, you know, this is, this was designed to be a companion to the other sign that you saw. They, they live on opposite sides of the lake at Rio. But we didn't want them to be completely the same, but cousins to, to one another. The one thing that's not represented in this elevation is these are not all arranged on the same plane. There is some depth, so it's, it's definitely very sculptural in nature. So it's, it's definitely a more artistic expression.
What is the depth of the elements themselves? How flat are those?
They are eight inches. So they're eight inch squares.
Eight inches. So they're square in section. Okay.
Yep, yep.
Square tubes. And what happens with the graphics? Do the graphics wrap or do they?
The graphics do wrap. So we've arranged the graphics that they're set up when, that you can see the pattern at a certain angle. And otherwise, it just appears somewhat abstract. And then the names are, the tenants are up top. So those are directing people to some of the tenants on the other side of the lake. So they have some representation on that side of the property.
But coming from the other direction, there wouldn't be any copy. It would just be a kind of a sculptural color massing thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Or no, I stand corrected. There's, I'm looking at the drawings now. We do have, so on the opposite side of this particular elevation, there would be directional text as well.
Hey, this is Danny. That was my question. So it's the same thing on both sides then?
The, the text would be different. So on one, yeah, still, still directional in nature to tenants within the center, but not the same.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Next slide, please. Again, here, we take a wall around the corner, same wall that is the screening wall from the loading dock. And this, this wall faces BGR Burger on Boardwalk Place. And what this is intended to do is be the gateway information to the alleyway that we've created between the hotel and what is now Silver Diner and carry people through to the tenants that are on the lake that don't have street-facing storefrontage. So we've created this gateway that has traditionally been a dark and dull alley and livened it up with, with Silver Diner and some plantings and some lights. And this is getting people to traverse that corridor, then to come out onto the new boardwalk where the new stage and all the performances will once again happen, once we're through this pandemic. So it's an informational, in the new sign motif and center colors and personality. So this faces Boardwalk Place, like I said, and tries to get people to enter the phase one, if you will, of the, of the renovation.
I'd like to ask a question. What happens in our volatile economy today? There's a lot of businesses that are going in and out of business, unfortunately. When a tenant leaves or a tenant goes out of business, how do you fill in or how does this, how does, do all of these new signs get updated as far as specific tenants? When the names are put on these, these posts?
Yeah. So unfortunately, if we do have a tenant go dark or vacate, these are designed to be replaced. So they will either be replaced with a tenant that we currently have that we don't have space for, we did, we didn't have space for before, or we'll utilize it. We've, you know, engaged a broker that sources temporary tenants. So not only are we looking to permanently backfill some spaces, but we're, we're looking to test some new concepts out. So we'll be able to quickly identify those new concepts that come in.
So you wouldn't have any blank spaces intentionally?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, correct.
Good question. So those are the four that don't comply, right? That's the, the way this is set up as a presentation?
There's, there's essentially two more. If, if we want to go through the last two. Next page.
Laura, in, did I misunderstand, Laura, the report is that there's four that are really, that we need to look at. The other two would, would comply kind of just on, on the standing sign package, right?
Right. So there's two more that I, that are new, but they would meet code requirements. So.
But we still need to review them because it's part of a comprehensive sign package?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Next page. So here we are proposing to utilize some of the street poles that currently have banners and institute additional wayfinding signage on those banners in, in specific locations where we feel they be utilized. So here's a representation of a possible banner that has parking that directs people to the entrance to a garage as they're driving down Grand Corner Avenue or Boardwalk Place. As well as on the other side, some directional signage to some tenants. So we envision using this very sparingly through the center. But we identified this as a convenient way to direct the vehicular traffic while they're traversing the center. And next slide, please. And the last new sign that we are presenting is in regards to the new playground that we are currently under design with. This sign will be incorporated in the new playground to address the sponsorship that we've created with our sponsor Adventist to help design this playground. So it will, it will have their messaging on it. And it is conceived to be changed out as the, as their messaging gets changed out. And those are the new signs that we are presenting to the commission today. The other cleanup items within the package, we found some inconsistencies with the size of signs. So we went ahead and addressed them. We're not asking for any additional square footage on signs. We are just going through the text and making sure that the renderings that are presented in the package meet the overall approved square footage that we have in the text that describes the signs.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. Let me break into the process here just a quick minute. We're going to go to questions from the commission on the presentation and get some clarifications. But I also want to give Brian a chance to help us queue up the potential for public testimony or comment. So what would happen is next, we would go to our discussion, or not even that discussion, but questions. Then we would go to the public for comment and testimony on this application. And then we get back to our deliberation. So to set that up, and before we get to our questions, Brian, do you want to break in and do the, do your video so we can prep? If there's anyone in the audience that's going to raise their hand and want to, want to comment, they have the prep from your video.
Sheriff Bauer, we don't currently have any members of the public connected to the meeting.
So no one's connected. Okay. Well, I guess I just busted into our meeting for nothing. But anyway. Thanks for that. Okay. So commissioners, questions on the presentation so far? Phil, I see your hand go up there. Or maybe you're just.
I've, I've got a handful and they're really all around the, the sign SD2 and, or D2 and D3. The 17-foot-tall single pylon and the taller sort of multi-post sign. Starting with, starting with the, I think it's the D3, the tallest pylon sign that is going to be on either side of the bridge. Right now, currently on the, on the Rio Boulevard side towards Dix, where that dot is located on the plan, there's an existing sort of panel sign that's probably about, you know, six feet tall as well as two large four-lamp light posts. So what, what exactly are the details of how you're proposing to install or modify that? Because, because right now, though, you know, again, I'm eyeballing it. I don't know how tall those light posts are, but they look like they're probably on the order of the height of the sign you guys are proposing.
Yeah. So that entire plaza is currently ripped out. It's part of the phase two redevelopment. So that's where we're putting our fire lounge. So that, that's getting a complete remake.
Okay. And then similar, similar question at the other end of the bridge where you have both one of these 17-foot-tall pylons as well as the array of the smaller eight-inch tube signs. Looking at, is that area under, that whole plaza undergoing renovation as well?
So that plaza currently is not under renovation. We're only doing the boardwalk, yeah, the boardwalk side currently, I'm sorry, not boardwalk, Grand Corner Ave side currently. That plaza is not under renovation. And we foresee incorporating this with whatever design we finally decide on for that side of the project.
So the D3 sign that is made up of the multi, multiple little pickets, where exactly is that going to be placed? Because there's, there's two little landscape islands there, one with a tree in it. You know, is it, is it curved towards the street?
It is. It is. It follows the curvature of the street. So.
Could you pull up, could you cite one of the exhibits so we can see that in plan?
Yeah, it is. Fifty-seven. Yeah. And so. Yeah, next page right there.
So if you zoom in, you'll see D3 right in the center of the page. Yep, right there. So it's envisioned to go somewhere in that vicinity so that you get the visual impact from the movie theater entrance right down to that plaza. So it's almost like a calling card down the street.
I guess my only concern, I understand the, the desire for visibility. I mean, the reality is you'll see the graphics. You're not going to be able to read anything on it from the movie theater.
Correct.
But as you get closer to that corner, and I'm looking at it on Google Street View, you're going to have this 17-foot-tall pylon sign at the base of the bridge with this in front of it. So it's going to be, if you're sort of driving around that corner, looking towards the bridge, it's going to be very busy with signage, I guess. That's, that's my question is, you know, that, as you're pulling into the, you know, off of Washington Boulevard and coming, coming into the, at least vehicular-wise, coming into the development. And from a pedestrian standpoint, too, there is going to be a lot of overlapping signage as you look towards that bridge. And so that, that's my only concern there is that in an attempt to have something graphic that you can see from the movie theater, which is, I don't know how far away, a couple, several hundred feet away, that you may unintentionally be creating a whole lot of visual clutter for the people who are closer to it. And I don't know if you've looked through that or looked at that much, if you've run, if you rendered it and then considered that.
Kevin, do you want to speak to that a little?
Yeah, we, we have, we have looked at that and, you know, we have done some photo overlays and, and have that placed. I have that pulled up. I don't know if that's something I can share. But the idea with the, we'll call them the, the collection of eight-inch posts.
Kevin, let me interrupt you. Excuse me. So you have, you have an image you could share or you have an exhibit in the package you want to reference or what?
I do. I don't know if that's, that's allowed. It's not in the package.
It's not in the package. Brian, is there a way for him to share something back or is that not part of the constraints of our?
We currently don't allow that for any.
Okay. Okay. So the intent, as Dan had mentioned, was we have it, we have them positioned in the, in the planting area to serve as a terminus at the end of the street, to kind of serve as a bookend to the cinema on the other end. In regards to the other proposed location for the totem on the plaza near, closer to the bridge itself, that's something we, we would have to study in a bit more detail for the exact location.
Yeah, again, it, my, my concern or my, my question, and maybe, maybe this is for further debate later on in the, in days, like looking at each one of these in isolation as a sign type, I can get behind all of them. It's more that, that one location at the, the movie theater side, you've got two incredibly large format signs within throwing distance or spitting distance of each other that is going to be a lot for the people who are like walking next to them and who are close to them. And that's my only sort of question and concern there.
Yeah. And I think you're referring to what we consider right now the center direction, the directories, if you will. And that's currently in that plaza. And I, I agree that our intent is not to clutter up the center with various types of signs that compete for visual dominance. So we will, and you know, if, when we, if we move on this sign, again, you know, we're requesting the opportunity to put these signs. And, and we have a lot of different sign types and it is not intended to, you know, put all of these sign types all at once, but do it in such a way that it is respectful of the environment and also does not cause a visual impediment to other people because there's just so much conflicting signs. So I completely understand where you're coming from with that point.
Any other questions, Phil?
I don't, I don't have questions. I've got plenty of discussion, but.
Yeah, we'll dive in a little bit on that. Any other questions from the commissioners? No. Let me take you back to, because I have a couple. Any one of the four, but let's just for, for something to look at, one of the totem sheets would be, would be good enough. If Laura, if you could pull, pull up that, that sheet from the report. It's one of the, any of the four that we just looked at as part of the presentation, the first four.
You can bring up packet page 69. I think that's one of them.
So this, this goes to more the guideline update. And when you list the materials, there is wood, metal, high-density sign film. I assume that references something like Centra. Is that right?
I, I'm not sure the specific makeup of that or the, the name. Especially the name of the foam.
Acrylic, vinyl, PVC, fiberglass, all those are, you know, certainly standard materials for, for, for use. But I guess what I want to make sure there's, there's at least some sort of a framework around is looking at, for example, this set of, this particular totem. What would this be? Would it be a metal base with a painted background and then some vinyl applied to it? Really, how would this be made?
Yeah, this is proposed as a perforated aluminum panel with a vinyl overlay on it.
And the perf metal would have lighting behind it, I think you said for.
Yeah. So what you're looking at is, is every side of the four-sided column. So it would be a square tube and the light would be right in the center of it. So we'd poke through the preparations.
Okay. So is there a reason then in the proposal, you left a lot of sort of your own materials as part of the, part of the actual, I mean, you've gone as far as designing this and you've come pretty close to a final scheme. But then there's a lot of materials that may not be relevant. So I'm just curious what, what's driving that?
Correct. So this, these are the materials that are found throughout the signage package for various signs. So in order for, you know, we tried to be consistent and list these materials. If this sign was ever to be updated or reimagined in a way that, you know, we would want to incorporate some wood. We tried to give ourselves a little flexibility, design flexibility with this. But the intent right now is for this to be as designed in the aluminum with the vinyl.
Okay. Because I think, I think where I'm going to want to try to drive the discussion is a little bit of specificity about the quality of the sign. We'll get into things like height and location. But I think it also matters that there's a, there's a quality implied in what materials are assigned to that design. Because you could, you could pick a square, you know, you could pick a totem shape and it could come off as kind of cheap and lightweight, or you could do the same shape and design. It would come off as looking like a really high-quality focal for the site. And, and that matters, right? In terms of what, what we want to see in the package. The, I think Gloria broached the subject about what happens if you lose a tenant or change tenants. Is there flexibility in the actual directions themselves? If you would call up, it was, I forget which page it was now, Laura, the one that is the really tall 17-plus feet, the array of totems or the array of steel tube signs?
It's package page 70.
Thank you for that. So when I looked through this earlier, I, I sort of got it. I mean, there's a really interesting motif here of creating something that's bigger than, than it is when you, when you see it from a distance and kind of see it all composed. But one of the things that. When you, when you see it from a distance and kind of see it all composed, but one of the things that was confusing to me is how the directional. Component, the actual lettering. Located so high was really intended to be used. The sightlines are gonna be down low because a lot of the action is down at street level, the. Um, the basic size and shape of the letters, if you compare it to our sign guidelines are for the city. Um, you know, we, we discussed a lot about what size lettering and fonts should be used on a sign based on. Visibility and readability. This, this one confuses me because, and it's vertical, it's, it's, it's running bottom to top, so. Um, there, there's a lot of things working against us. I just wanted to kind of get your, your basic read, no pun intended. On, on how this is a good idea when if, if. Somebody who's as tall as little shadow figures are, is really trying to find their way somewhere, is this really a directional or is it something else?
Or Cat, do you wanna speak to that?
Um, sure, I, I think. You know, our intent all along was that it was, it was kind of dual purpose. That it was an artful expression um, that happens to have wayfinding. Um, you know, the, the wayfinding messaging is placed somewhat unconventionally, um, turning it vertically. You know, and it, it is, I do feel it, it's, it's large enough to be legible. Um, but it's, it's purely intended for a pedestrian experience. Um, from the wayfinding standpoint, it's, it's not intended be from a vehicular standpoint at all.
And it wouldn't be on that, in that.
No, no.
John, can, can I tag on to that? Kevin, what in, in your sort of professional experience, what is the, the ratio or the, the relationship between. Text height and, and viewing distance? Uh, you know, I, I've worked on projects with numbers, numerous graphic consultants and everybody sort of has their own. Take on X number of feet per inch of, of text height. What, what is, what is your thinking here?
Um, you know, we, we typically follow those types of standards when we're doing vehicular. Uh, wayfinding messaging um, with pedestrian. Just as a general guideline that we use is a three inch cap height for anything overhead. For visibility and then obviously the higher up um, gets a little bit larger. I would have to go back and reference the drawings um, just to be sure to, to double check the height of these, of what we're proposing, but. I, I'm pretty positive it's more than three inches in this case.
And, and the reason I'm asking is just, you know, you've got an eight inch tube, so ma- maybe your text height, I'm eyeballing here, maybe your text height is four inches. But all of the text that human beings are gonna actually read is twelve to fifteen feet or more above their heads. Which means to actually read it, unless you're gonna do this, you have to be back from it a far distance. And so that's, that's all I'm trying to gauge is. To comfortably have this be useful as wayfinding, are you gonna have to be forty feet away from it? In which case can you read it?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that could be an issue at, at forty feet. I, I do think you're gonna, you know, be able to see it, you know, closer than that for sure.
Well, I think you also have the issue where a lot of this activity is after dark and, and is it really illuminated reasonably? Or are you staring into the head of a, of a streetlight and you can't see it up there, see it anyway with the glare? I mean, there's no, you're not dedicating any kind of focused. Light on it, right, to, to, to pop the, the directional copy? You're just ambient light?
We were proposing some in-grade lighting fixtures to help graze those at night.
Okay. So there is a sense of lighting. The last thing I just wanted to kind of touch on, um, and again, this is sort of related to the question about materials. What are you imagining the life cycle of these signs to be? I mean, there's, they're signed, they're signed on the site now from the original Rio Development, it's relatively old. Some of these, depending on how you fabricate them, won't last that long and, and so I'm just trying to get a sense of, are you. Building in a little bit of um. Some, uh, shorter life cycle for the pieces so that they can be changed or should be changed. I mean, what are you, what are you imagining for durability and? Kind of expected life cycle for these, life, lifespan, please.
Um, Dan, do you want me to?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, typically, a lot of that is based upon paint. And we, there's two sign paints that we typically specify. Um, and both generally come with about a ten year lifespan. Until you start to get some fading or dulling, then, you know, we would be looking at some refurbishments after that, so. Typically, you know, that's, that's what I, I would base. The lifespan on, at least initially, before we would have to do some refurbishment because of uh, the paint. It's about ten years.
That's reasonable. All right, any other uh, questions? I'm gonna leave mine there for now. Um, and Brian, you said nobody has um, tapped on the hand raising or anything for a. A comment tonight from the public?
That is correct, sir. We still have no members of the public connected to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Well, that will take us, Laura, I think, to your recommendation, um, and then we'll get into some discussion.
Um, okay, so the sign ordinance allows planning commission to grant a minor waiver. Um, to approve sign packages with signs that deviate um, from what the code allows. Minor waivers can be approved if they meet uh, four findings and staff has provided. Draft findings on packet pages forty-eight and forty-nine for your reference. And it is staff's opinion that um, these findings have been met. So with that, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted. Applicants' testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendation. Grant approval of AFP eighty-five sixty-eight twenty twenty, Rio, Washingtonian Comprehensive Sign Package Amendment. Finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four one seventy, twenty-four one seventy-two A and twenty-four two thirteen A of the city code. With one condition, and that is for the applicant to revise the plans to address minor cleanup comments from planning staff prior to issuance of sign permits.
Great, thank you, Laura. Um, so to, to start off the conversation, commissioners, I think, um, I, I wanna propose two framework, two, two ways of framing this. The first is um, to not get into a discussion about whether or not. The marketing or the experiential quality of these signs is right or wrong. I think, I think the. The developer and the landlord, the operators, you know, they kind of own that. But I do wanna get into the discussion about whether or not. It's appropriate to do signs where maybe sculpture should be and or. Um, do signs in a way that, that I think Phil was leading up to, which, which causes less clarity for. For people on the site, um, and, and, and doesn't really add to the, the, the basic need of signs on the site. And then a little bit about if the compatibility of the sign package itself with, with the development is, is either in line or not. And I, and I don't really, we, we can start wherever anybody feels passionate or feels interested in starting. Um, but I, but I do wanna be careful, we don't get too deep into. Whether or not we like them, but whether or not they, they make sense in terms of the criteria we have as, as a sign ordinance and. So kind of an oversight of compatibility. Matt, please jump in.
So, uh, uh, I heard what you said, but I'm still gonna say that I really like the package. I think also, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rephrase, I think, adhering to your second, your second point, which is. You know, is it sculpture, is it signage? With a sort of endorsement of the idea of environmental graphics as sculpture. Uh, frankly, when I saw the package, I was really, really excited about it, the fact that um, you know, it's really geared towards what is already. Obviously, you know, we've worked for decades now to make this the most walkable sort of, you know, retail environment, uh, you know, in the county. Uh, to some extent and, you know, creating a little bit of noise. It, to my, in my mind, actually increases that environmental graphic bonus, so. You're, you may not be finding your way um, all the time with the signage because, you know, they vary. It breaks a lot of the rules of, of basic wayfinding, right? But uh, but it, what it does is enhance the sort of environmental idea. There's lots going on here, there's more going on that way. There's more going on over there. This isn't just a dead end alley, there's stuff going on over there. What the actual signage says to me is less important, given our contained pedestrian environment. Uh, and just the fact that you're sort of environmentally, you know, throwing a lot of color at, um, at the project, which is great. Uh, if anywhere in the city deserves a lot of color, it's certainly Rio. Uh, and the, the messaging of that, of the actual wayfinding is less important to me, as long as it creates that sort of really vibrant. Active, colorful, you know, uh, don't forget there's stuff, there's stuff over there, there's stuff over here. And then, and then, you know, sort of, I'm gonna, you know, uh. Uh, I know Phil's gonna fill in his opinion, but I think, you know, I'm not as concerned about whether it's four inches or whether it's six inches or whether it's legible from forty feet or thirty feet. Uh, I think there is some concern about bunching it on site. Um, and certainly if, if you're at least one to one or one to two, you know, if it's a seventeen foot sign and seventeen feet away or twenty feet away, I think it starts to make sense. When you get them too close, um, it sort of breaks some of those physical rules and feels claustrophobic and. People aren't encouraged to walk between them, but uh, but that seems like the next step and not the sort of sign guideline step, but.
Lloyd, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to endorse what Matt just said and, and add to it that. This is a fun place. It's not a residential place, it's a retail place. And I think to use a, to borrow a, an architectural term that I learned from Matt, it's funky. And the funkiness is what makes it exciting and vibrant. And I'd like to see more of that, and I think this really does set it apart, it makes it different, it's not traditional. If you go to Kentlands or you go to uh, Crown Farm, you look at that, that's a residential community, they've got very strict guidelines, but. Nevertheless, it's traditional. This is not traditional in, in many ways. In fact, twenty years ago, when the original proposal came through, it wasn't traditional. And now you've got many other uh, venues that are emulating this open air concept. That seems to really beg to um, the kind of signage or the kind of, if you wanna call it sculpture. I think that's a combination, like Matt said, I think it is a combination of sculpture and signage, wayfinding. That makes it really interesting, and that's what I think, that's what I would like to see done, particularly in a fun area like this.
Sure. Good comments, thank you. Danny?
Yeah, I, I wanna, I wanna kind of co-sign with, with Matt and, and. And Lloyd just said, I, I agree, and I like exactly where they're putting it, you know, because it gives you a, a sense of like what's around the corner. And it, it, it kind of invites you to see what else is, is out there. But I also like, and, and I know you, you talked about that, but I do like the combination of wayfinding and sculpture. I, 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 I'm really excited about it, and, and I know you say it's not how we feel, but. But there is a, a sense of aesthetics that I, that I think will be um. Helpful to, to individuals who, who are there. I actually invited some of my, my family to come down. A couple of months ago to go to Rio and, and they actually went to that area and, and they were like, wow, this is so nice. They were really engaged with that, and I think that this just enhances that experience and, and this is an experiential thing, and that's what. That's what works for me, so.
All right, Phil.
All right. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, gonna disagree with anybody, nor, nor am I gonna um. Obsess over type, type size as much as Matt thinks I am. My, my point in, in questioning the type size on the D three sign, the, the multiple vertical. Pylon. Was more that, you know, I've been, I've been driving back and forth on Google Street View here and, and the point I think I was trying to make is. I think that sign is almost useless as a text-based wayfinding. The idea of it as a piece of art or a piece of sculpture or something at the end of that road that gives you a pop of interest. That you can see from three hundred feet away, I think is awesome. And I think my, my, the more I drive back and forth and the more I look at this is. The, the more I, my recommendation and encouragement to the applicant would be, take the text off it, don't make it, you know, a sign. Find a, find an art piece or a sculpture or something else that's twenty-two feet tall that you can put there. That, that draws people down because once you walk within sight of that thing. You can see the seventeen foot tall pylon that has the exact same information on it. And so that, that, that's my only, you know, critique of that one sign. I, I'm on board with, with everything else. Just for, for as, as tall as that, you know, that, those, those posts, the tallest one is twenty-two, twenty-three feet tall, so. You know, I, I would encourage you to look at something that accomplishes your goal, that is not a sign and that we don't have to look at. You know, it's not, it's not part of this process, it's a piece of artwork, it's a piece of, of something that it, that does your goals without being assigned.
And I, and I, I mean, I take it one step further, cause where I was getting ready to make a recommendation earlier and had to bite my tongue. I, I, I mean, the. How dynamic that thing is and where it is and what it can do and all that, it's, it's, it's really a great idea. So whoever came up with it, I'm losing track of who's, who owns what piece of this now, but. The, 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 the design team really should get a pat on the back for thinking outside of the conventional, you know. Monument sign or, or directory wayfinding sign. Where my head went with this is I'm going to, what is a very traditional Lloyd, the, the Kentland's grounding in, in my, my new urbanism. Background is thinking about the pedestrian scale, regardless of the style and regardless of everything else that's going on. The immediate, to me, anyway, the, the most intuitive thing is, yeah, do something big and bold you can see from the movie theater. And that really anchors and creates a nice pivot and focal on that corner, but then bring the text down. To eye level and maybe even do it in a more understated way so that it's a little bit of a surprise and, and a, and a. A valuable piece when you're actually walking by and you realize you do have some, some, some enhanced wayfinding. You don't have to figure out what's across the bridge, it's right there in front of you, spelled out. Um, because you were drawn to this thing that was, that was so dynamic and clearly was saying or communicating, there's, there's more down here. Whoever was getting to that, that, that logic, I think you were, Matt, Matt, you were doing that. All that makes perfect sense, it's just. It seems silly to put the text up there, almost to the detriment of what's becoming a very cool piece where. Um, who is it, Ruskin or whoever talked about the different distances you view something? You know, this thing looks great up close, has a little directional, the series of pylon directionals. You know, at mid-distance, you begin to pick up on the, the fact it's got this sort of um. You know, multiple height post pillars thing. Um, sort of sticks in the ground, and then from way back, you pick up on the massing that happens because the color carries across between them and creates these big shapes. So it's really a nice piece, and I just, I, to me, it would make more sense to begin to study it that way. Think about what you, how you encounter when you are. Eight feet away from it, because that, that's really a valuable place to think about it. Um, and then how impactful it is when you're thirty feet and a hundred feet from it, and I think you're about there with just a little bit of that tweaking. Uh, my other big um, sort of real focus is that I do, first of all, I'll preface, I, I know you guys. Over the years have done nothing but really high quality work here, so, so please read this as being more about a, a general statement on documents than it does about the work you've done. But it makes me nervous to see a sign guideline update that we would do for perpetuity, if nobody comes back and changes it. With materials that are sort of substandard for the design intent that you're showing, so. I don't, I, I, my, my comment's a little general without having the, the specific change, but. You know, certain PVC products are fine, but not when they're by themselves, you know, not when they're a PVC fence post and they're just, you know, a cheap. Shape or cheap extrusion, but there is application of, of, um, you know, vacuum formed plastics in sign making that actually can come off pretty good. So I, I wanna just spend just a couple of minutes, and I need the other commissioners to help me out here, because I'm, I'm not, I'm not fully fleshed out of this comment, but. In looking at the materials we're gonna approve on this revision, should we limit it more or be more specific about what the proposal is? Is actually for these signs, and then if something needs to change later, if you do need to go back and make it a wood sign or, or a, you know, vinyl, whatever sign. Um, that's the revision we would, we wanna be worried about, not, not a generic, a bunch of generic materials that could end up being. Kind of not up to the same standard as the rest of the development if the wrong person got hold of them.
I, I think it, it, it sounds like maybe we're talking about the difference between primary materials and secondary materials that, you know. Aluminum and wood are perfectly acceptable as primary sign materials. Vinyl and PVC are sort of secondary ancillary materials and, and maybe some sort of. Something that's generic enough to allow flexibility, but specific enough to make it clear that a seventeen foot tall PVC sign is not acceptable.
Right, right. That's, that's a great way to, to think about it, um, and I don't know, the. Applicants' team, any, any feedback on that or any reply?
Yeah, um, a- and, and I, I completely understand the sentiment and we are completely in line. You know, I think what we've seen through the um. The maturity of all sorts of developments that we've done is. There, there will be materials that are introduced and either used um, as a secondary texture. Or um, you know, as, as an accent piece, and what we were trying to do with this package is. Incorporate some of those materials that, that are being used, um, but never intend to do a styrofoam seventeen foot sign.
Right.
Now, there's absolutely the right uh, tone to, to, to meet and, and have the quality that.
the quality that reflects the center itself. Um, so I I, please don't read into that that we are trying to use cheap materials. We're just trying to get a basket of materials that then we can play with to do things that we might not conceive right now. And that's the intent.
That's fair. Do you think there's a way to just restructure that? One little paragraph, frankly, that shows up on each sheet with something like a primary and a secondary or a um, you know, call it the armature, call it the structure, call it something that 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 forms the main main body of the sign and then you know, the the lesser lighter material just become um, a part of the palette you can use for some of the detailing and and accents. Is there a way we could structure that so we 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 see that documented?
I think Kevin, um, I think you and I can play around with that and see if we can come up with something that that meets everybody's objectives and 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 uh, and concerns.
Commissioners, um, does that sound reasonable or do you have any other comments on that?
Laura, do you have enough uh, information from us to sort of be able to steer that? Two sentences that would the applicant would propose?
Uh, yes, I think so. Um, does this need to be an additional condition of approval?
I think it would be, it'd be applicant to work with staff to um, structure the materials for primary and secondary or whatever the right language is. And then you guys could work out the actual the actual language in the in the document. But I was kind of turning to the commissioners to also find out if they first of all agree with that and feel free not to, and if there's any other insight on how to maybe um, set that up.
John, would would the term quality materials substitute for primary and secondary?
No, because in a guideline like this, we would have to say what the materials are. And I think the point is to separate the primary ones from the secondary ones.
What is he, what does primary mean? I mean, primary to me means uh, could it be made out of steel or PVC? What's quality? I mean, what is a primary?
Yeah. Well, they've listed some materials, right? So I think it's about isolating the one or two or three of those that we would expect as the predominant material for the built, for the structure, the face, the construction of the sign with some of the others being very much about the smaller details and some of the, some of the lesser lesser prominent components. Because clearly you can mix, you can say vinyl, you can say acrylic. Um, and that spans a huge range of of material, frankly. So it's a little bit, it's sketchy even in that that respect, but I I think the point we're trying to do and the implication of separating it is that the main, the main, say the tube, right? And that somebody gave this example, we wouldn't want that to be an extruded PVC fence post. We would want, you know, a substantive metal or something. And then, but PVC components as as, you know, lit components as letter app, whatever they are, those, that's fine. I mean, that's that's a typical way to pull that off.
I mean, we often use the language as primary structural and facing materials to be wood or metals. And that includes some steel and stainless and aluminum. Uh, and then secondary decorative materials are, can be, not are, but can be. Um, you know, whatever you want to list there. So it could be the entire list that they just shared with us.
I like, I like the distinction, Matt, of decorative materials. And that's a distinction that that's I can understand.
That's good. That's a good way to do it. Phil, does that make some sense?
That makes sense.
Danny, what do you think?
Yes. Am I, let's see. Oh, yeah, I am open. Yeah, yes, I I I can concur with that.
Okay. So that's materiality. The the other piece was I did, I wasn't, we didn't talk a lot about it, but the lighting scheme for the the sign package in general is a little bit of internally illuminated for decorative purposes or effect, but not for actual sign face, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So any any illumination for signage per per se is um, all facelit, either uplights from the sidewalk or ambient from the sign, but whatever is out there, right?
Right.
Okay. Um, do you think we've captured that in the guideline or is that part of the update to the guideline? Maybe Laura, that's a question for you more than anybody.
Um, so not all of the signs proposed specify the type of illumination. So in that case, if it doesn't say one way or the other, we would basically default to what the city code allows.
Okay.
And, you know, freestanding signs can be internally or externally illuminated. Building signs, it depends on how close it is to the street edge. Um, so we would just, you know, default to what city code allows and.
Okay. Because generally, by that same, on that same kind of line of thinking, we don't allow in the ordinance, um, internal illumination that's just for general backdrop. We only allow it in the actual um, copy itself. So
Right.
what we're approving here is sort of the, not the opposite, but it's 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 not in line with that exactly by doing those perf metal um, accent panels. Which, by the way, I like. I mean, I don't think there's, I should say there, I think those are perfectly compatible with what's what's going on here, but did we really account for that in this guideline update?
Um, well, I think uh, the city ordinance, it does allow that type of illumination if the background is opaque. Um, and it's just the letters that show through as illuminated.
That's my point, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So that would be allowed.
Not illuminating, we we don't allow illuminated backgrounds, you know, so what, so they're essentially using a field of a background with a little, you know, holes in it for a lighting effect. And and technically that wouldn't comply with the city's ordinance, so we have to account for it in this this guideline.
Okay, so then we would need to allow that. That's some language to allow that.
I mean, we can approve it directly, but just because it's a comprehensive sign package, it probably ought to get a a sentence or something in there.
And 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 frankly, John, looking at the signs, you could make an argument that the the portion of the structure that is actually the sign that has the text on it is a solid opaque background, that the illumination is not, you're not backlighting the sign, you're backlighting the artwork around the sign. So, you know.
He's a lawyer.
I I do both. I I I go back.
The whole thing, you you probably see where I'm going with this. The whole thing is being approved as a sign and we have some internal illumination. I'm just trying to make it so that it's clear we're good with that. And, you know, someone raises their hand and say, well, that's not part of it.
Yeah, so I I think you raise a great point. Uh, and and I'm not, I'm not gonna whine and say, Greg, you need to come up with a whole pedestrian signage code. But uh, but you know, we're applying this sort of automotive vehicular signage criteria for, you know, how you read letters and how you like those letters. It's something that that completely doesn't apply, right? So I I would be, you know, to John's point, I would be kind of desperate to get as many of these things codified in the signage piece where it's not a vehicular sign. You know, and maybe we even need the little sort of, you know, line on that page, say, these are pedestrian, uh, you know, wayfinding elements, not vehicular, you know, it can just say pedestrian. And if, when we get to the vehicular ones, like in the road, the Rio in the road, that that's a vehicular sign. Um, so that that needs to comply with the city's lighting ordinance of signage. Right? Whereas anything that's pedestrian does not, it should have its own set of criteria based on whatever artistic branding and environmental graphic needs are for those pedestrians. I, yeah, I'm I'm kind of scared now that John's brought it up, that we're gonna end up with some kind of, you know, spotlight on a wall sign in the in that alley piece, you know, and it's just, that's, sounds horrible.
I I would bring up, um, under the code, I I would believe what they're showing currently would be allowed. Um, it would not violate the the internal illumination requirements. Um, we did change that with the new update. Um, it does add in there letters, logos, symbols, graphics and characters um, are allowed to be illuminated and does probably say usually in the form of cutouts. So I would assume or would say these, those little circles are a symbol that's a cutout of the sign.
Okay. Just, I I would, if I if I could, I would, yeah, that's 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 reaching in there pretty deep. But I I think, Laura, if you don't mind, just as you're updating the material list, um, just acknowledge the 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 lighting is part of this scheme that's approved. That's kind of what I'm getting at and on those, on those environmental graphics.
Okay.
Just to button it up. I I was, I thought I was bringing up a technicality, but it's turned into a bigger discussion, so. That that's all I was after was to make sure it was completely buttoned up. Uh, nice job, guys, by the way. Um, any other comments or?
Do you need a third? Um, uh, I don't, but I'm asking if you do, uh, and what it would look like, a third criteria to set for text on the taller signage piece, some kind of formulaic. Uh, or you you're just encouraging the applicant to keep looking at how that's how that text is used?
That that's what I'm saying. I I don't, I I don't know that we would legislate or adjudicate that. I think it's just, it doesn't make sense, given all of the criteria that we generally use for walkable communities to have it have it that way.
Yeah.
And for the art, on the artistic side of this, it could be perfectly acceptable because it doesn't look really wacky. You're sticking it up there, you know, making it kind of unexpected and you know, forcing people to kind of look at it. And I mean, there's all kinds of ways you could talk yourself into it. But, you know, we also just have a bit of a responsibility to make really good walkable pedestrian environments that are not confusing and are are, you know, clear for wayfinding.
Yeah, sorry, John. I mean, I I think if we were unlike with a road or a traffic sign where there is a safety and a and a, you know, not just a functional, but a a life safety and and usability aspect to the text type. I don't think it works the way it is now is from a pure readability standpoint, but I also don't think that hurts anybody.
Right.
So I think it could be done better, but I have no qualms approving it because, you know, it's not going to cause somebody to run off the road or slam on their brakes.
And that's where I'm at with with making it more about the commentary that that the applicant can take another look at just because it's a, it's a orientation that I have and it may be, maybe you consider a bias and that's fine too. So that that's where I was. So Matt answered your question. I don't think that's a condition. I think the only condition is to get the clarity in the um, the guideline about the materials and the lighting.
Sounds great.
So Laura, is there maybe a way you could on the fly craft what that condition might sound like?
Um, sure. So the first condition is the one proposed in the staff report, applicant to revise plans to address minor cleanup comments from planning staff prior to issuance of permits. And then um, the second one, um, applicant to work with staff to revise plans to address structural and facing materials and secondary and decorative materials and illumination.
That works. Great, thank you. Applicants team, does that sound okay to you?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, commissioners, anything else we should consider or add or discuss? Seen a lot of shaking heads. Okay. Um, so with that, we have our recommendation from staff. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, I move that the planning commission grant AFP eight-five-six-eight has twenty-twenty uh, comprehensive sign package amendment finding it in compliance with section twenty-four, one-seventy, twenty-four, one-seventy-two A and twenty-four, two-thirteen A of the city code with the two conditions as written to the record.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, this this is a again, another great step forward for this, for this uh, great part of the community. So thank you so much for the work you're doing on it.
I appreciate the help and guidance that the city has provided. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, um, so now we're just from the commission. Um, and I'll just work my way around the the Hollywood Squares here. Um, Matt, anything tonight?
Nothing for me. Thank you, though.
Okay, Lloyd?
Yeah, I've got two points. One is just about our recent discussion. If if a sign comes in or, excuse me, if a piece of artwork comes in, sculpture will say, and it has wayfinding on it or it has some indication that it's, it has a theme to it that's specific to a uh, project. Do we have provisions in our guidelines about that? I mean, I'm a little confused now because if this turns into sculpture more than wayfinding, then are we, are they restricted to the sign ordinances?
Um, yeah, so this is actually something that came up in a lot of discussion we had internally when we looked at the sign ordinance. Um, before, we never had any provisions or anything in there about art or signage and everything kind of got lumped into the signage at the end of the day. Um, we have actually broken it out now in the sign ordinance. Um, so if it doesn't have any wayfinding in there related to a business or anything like that, we would consider it art and art does is not considered signage and therefore would not require a sign permit. We would only require probably a minor amendment um, for the location and review of the actual footer and all that.
Okay, thank you. And the other point I just want to make was, uh, I want to wish Miriam Gonzalez, who's part of the staff, a speedy and full recovery. I know she's gone through a lot and uh, God bless her. She is one tough lady and look forward to seeing her again in person when we get to get together in City Hall in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for that, Lloyd. That's a great.
So Lloyd, I'm happy to report she is back at work, uh, at home. She can't drive yet, but she is um, uh, fully productive and um, she's also on on point to translate all our Spanish uh, work for Lake Forest Mall, which I'm about to report on.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Her uh, her sense of humor and zest were were very apparent in her last email to us, so happy to see that. Uh, let's see, Phil, anything tonight? You're in Paul Lynn Square tonight for me. You have an irreverent, you have an irreverent comeback?
This is, this is hour number thirteen of Zoom for me for the day, so my irreverence is is gone at this point, right? So I, nothing from me this evening.
We do everything in Teams and not only are you like buried in your meetings on Teams, but you've also got the whole chat thing going um, on the side from from various, so it can be a little, little intense sometimes. All right, uh, Matt, did I come to you? I can't remember. Okay, uh, Lloyd, Danny?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, uh, we have um, um, a regional workshop coming up with MPCA on the twenty-fifth called Strong Town. And it's gonna do, deal with the components on on that as it relates to pandemic. And of course, we've got our um, annual conference coming up and I, Lloyd asked me to to provide some information and I and I promised him. We're still trying to come up with it, but what I what I will do when I get home, because I'm in the car as I said, um, I will send that to Greg so he can distribute it to everyone. Because we do have a summary of what's going on. And as a reminder, um, Frank Johnson, the our our um, esteemed um, lawyer and Kirk Eby will be presenting at our annual conference. And I'm so excited that Gatesburg is gonna have a big part in the annual conference.
That's great.
Yeah.
I don't want to see your thunder, but I I got an email from MPCA just a couple of days ago about it. And I just wanted to emphasize it's free. Um, it's all virtual, so we can all attend essentially, right? I mean, it would all be crazy to jump in. All right, that's great. Um, what else? Anything? Um, I'm sorry, Danny, anything else? Is that?
Yeah, I I and thank, thank Lloyd. Lloyd, thank you so much for bringing that up about Miriam. Um, she is such a a big part of what we do and what, you know, I've done for the last nineteen years and and I'm, I really just wish her all the best and wish her well and and look forward to engaging with her again. We've really missed her. So I'm glad that she's um, getting better.
Yes, indeed. All right, thanks, Danny. Um, from staff, Greg?
Sorry, uh, nothing for me tonight, other than the reminder of the next planning commission meeting on October seventh.
Okay, great. Um, and you have, I assume by now you've got polling done for that. We're we're in good shape for that.
Um, let me double check. I will send an email out to the commissioners.
Perfect. Hello, Mr. Schledding. How are things?
Yes, well, actually, things are crazy busy in the planning department in the city. And I just want to give you the heads up that your agendas are gonna get a lot more full. Um, you know, only one item really on the agenda tonight, but um, it's gonna uh, pick up quite a bit because planning staff is crazy busy. Just an update on Lake Forest Mall, you know, um, uh, we are about one month into the twelve-month moratorium that mayor and council approved last month. Um, we are um, guns to the wall on working on the master plan map designation amendment. And um, the long-range planning staff, Rob Robinson, um, Kirk Eby, Laura Mahfood, they are working um, to to to, the first step is to put up a, you know, state-of-the-art project page, which they're working with Tom Lonigan and Sharon Disk and uh, Britta's group, the PAO staff. And, you know, it's kind of a all-hands-on-deck effort right now. The project page, we hope to be up sometime next week. Um, focus groups actually start next week. There's a um, huge meeting of Transportation S H A and M dot um, on September twenty-fourth. That's the first of a of many focus groups. I'm not actually sure how many focus groups there will be, but it's, you know, probably a dozen at least. Um, open forums will start late October. And the the ultimate goal for this quarter is a joint work session um, of the planning commission and the mayor and council, probably the first work session in December. It hasn't quite been. probably the first work session in December. It hasn't quite been set yet. But that's gonna kind of be the results of the stakeholder outreach and then the beginnings of formulating the plan. So things are going really well and we're excited and staff is engaged and making great progress.
So the work session in December would be the outcome of all those focus groups? Will they be continuing into the next year?
Well, there would be more engagement next year, but the outcome of the initial stakeholder outreach would be the work session in December, yes.
Okay. And is there a list now of what all of those stakeholder groups are or who they are?
Not quite yet. It's, it's being formulated right now, but as I said, I think there's at least a dozen. And we can get you a list probably within the next couple of weeks.
I think for a couple of commissioners here especially, it it would probably be good for them to hear it, you know, just for no other reason than maybe they'd have some insight on on some more peripheral insight or stakeholders that might be, might be appropriate.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're we're open to any any analysis suggestions. I mean, and I think this is going to be probably the greatest public outreach of any pro, any pro project in the city at this point.
I know there's a ton of interest, so it's it's likely to, likely to have reach far and wide. Yeah, that's great. Well, thank you for that update. Anything else or?
No, I think that's it for me.
Well, we have a new city manager, right?
We do.
That, with what she's officially started now or?
Started Monday.
Monday, okay.
Anisha Riley and she's delightful. And yeah, Greg and I talked about bringing her to one of your next meetings. We're not she's gonna come to that. But yeah, absolutely. We want to introduce her to you and for you to meet her and and I'm, you know, I'm very optimistic for our future in the city.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else from anyone tonight?
It's just any, just one quick question of of John and Josh Schlichting. Is what what what's the status of of like, you know, in-person activity with the planning department? Has anything changed or you're still co- combination of working there and and working from home?
Yeah, I would say about, you know, we reopened at the beginning of July.
Right.
I'm in the office every day because a certain amount of my staff is in the office every day. About fifty percent of my staff in the department is still working hundred percent teleworking. About fifty percent are coming in, I would say fifty percent of the time. So and on any given day, we have about twenty five percent of the staff in City Hall. That is pretty much, you know, status quo for now. I think until, you know, phase three, and I I'm not sure when phase three is gonna happen for the city, I think you know, it's gonna be a while before that changes, but I can tell you that productivity has never been better. And the teleworking, we still don't have actually an official teleworking policy for the city because it's been on the fly, but it's working. And so, so far, so good.
Right, yeah, okay. And and of course, if we need something, we'll, you know, contact and and make a, make arrangements or whatever. Because I did have some some stuff I needed to to, and I'll follow up with you. I had some some ideas about some things, so so I I will just contact you about that.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, we're adapting. You know, it's, it's all about resilience right now.
Right.
We're adapting.
Well, and I have to say to your point, just as a small snapshot of, I know the the mountains of work that you're, you and your staff, the 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 work product that we see every every two weeks for our meetings, not not a single blip in the in the quality and the in the output of it. I mean, it's all been very much on on par with the the years of quality work that's goes on. So you know, my compliments to to everyone who's who's in behind the scenes on all this because you're right. I mean, it's there hasn't seemed to be any interruption to the the basic level of service and the high, I should say, the high level of service that that I think folks would come to expect from from the city.
Well, thank you, John. And and I'm sure that our staff really appreciates your saying that. And I can tell you, I mean, we have an amazing staff right now. And we're actually bringing on two new planners in early October. We've got an environmental planner coming from the D C government and a community planner coming from Oregon. So, yeah. Fires.
Yeah. What'd you say? He's gonna help you put out fires? Don't say that.
But he's escaping the fires, which is a really good thing.
Yeah, all right. Anything else tonight? All right. If not, have a good evening. We're adjourned.